Mr. Chairman, for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This evening's meeting is being taped and will be broadcast at some point in time, I'm assuming. We are as— one, two, let me see, two, three, four. There's five hearings scheduled tonight. There will only be one. Item number two, which is the public— here is a continued public hearing. The site plan approval located at 1,000 Technology Drive. The owners have requested a continuance to 2/13/25. Can I have a motion to accept their request for continuance?
Motion so made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three, continued public hearing to be held, petition, a site plan review located at 120 Stockwell Drive. They're asking for a continuance to 2/13/25. Can I have a motion to accept their continuance request?
So made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number four, continued public hearing to be held, petition of applicant Jane Caesar, 1141 Central Street, Stoughton. They have requested to continue to February 13/25. Can I have a motion to accept that continuance?
Motion so made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, continued public hearing to be held, petition of applicant Nona for VFW Brewsworth LLC. Their request a continuance to February 27, 2025. Can I have a motion to accept their continuance?
Motion so made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six is a new public hearing will be held in a petition of applicant property owner at 288 Pleasant Street LLC for a site plan review under Section 10.6 for an after-the-fact site plan for parking lot already installed on the west side of the property adjacent to the apartment building with access to Pleasant Street. Improvements to stormwater drainage are also proposed. The applicant is represented by Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC. The property is located at 288 Pleasant Street, Stoughton, Mass. 02072. Assesses map 67, Lot 99, residential urban district zoning district. Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion so— so made.
Second.
All in favor? Can I be honored where applicants please come up and speak? Bill, can you just give us a brief on what's happening here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The applicant—if you can—I'll—if you can—you can see from this, this happened about a year ago. The applicant without us kind of didn't even realize he needed permits, was improving the property. He owns several of the multifamily projects. He paved this back parking lot and, you know, put in a dumpster enclosure and just improving the site. We met with them. We were like, "It's—it's over five spaces. You need a full site plan review." They've worked very well with us. So this is kind of an after-the-fact permit to permit the parking lot. They're proposing, you know, drainage. They've got to take out an older tree that's in, you know, somewhat disrepair and proposing, you know, planting two new trees in replacement. So that's—that's in a nutshell what the project is.
So the before and after conditions, or what it was before the parking lot and then after, or is this additional work that they're doing right now?
There's no additional work.
So what they're showing is the existing conditions the way it is now?
The shaded portion of the parking area is the new pavement.
Yeah, the shaded area right here is the new pavement.
Right, but then it says remove concrete pads and some other work in that other—
Oh, they're removing— there's a concrete pad that's—that's right here.
Yep.
I don't—I don't know why this thing says—it keeps on going AutoCAD on me. There is a concrete pad that's where the drainage is going to go. It's just a concrete pad that's out in their landscape.
Well, they're adding drainage, what we're saying now.
They're adding the drainage, underground drainage, yes.
Push the button to green.
Oh, it'll go greenly.
Pull it to your close, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers. And as Bill had already mentioned, the—the owner of the site had improved the site and put that—that gray shaded area is the new parking area that he—they put in. And he was trying to improve the—the look of the site and whatnot, didn't realize he had to come in for a permit for that. So we—we—he notified—I—he got in contact with us when the—the town asked him to, and the site had fully surveyed. And so what we're proposing now is to keep that pavement in place that he's added, but we've retrofit drainage controls into that design. So what it does is the water sheds off, she flows off in one direction, off of that parking lot. We're collecting it into a trench drain, putting it into a catch basin with four-foot-deep sump to take some sediment out of that if—it if it needs to. And then where we have subsurface drainage chambers that have been designed to handle and infiltrate all storm events up to the hundred—up to and including the 100-year storm event. So there should be no runoff from that at all onto the neighbors.
Presently, is it running off the site?
I'm sorry?
Is it presently running off the site?
You know, I think the soil is sandy enough. If it—if it does, it goes up towards the parking lot that's—I don't know which way is north on the plan, but the—towards the top of the sheet, you can see that parking easement—the words parking easement up there. And that's for the abutting property. So that—it all drains down towards that direction. And there've been no—that I'm aware of, there've been no complaints or any negative things that have happened on that property. So I think, you know, not all—the this is—this is a good thing. It's going to help clean the water that comes off it, and it will significantly reduce whatever is actually shedding off that parking lot now.
Any members of the board have any questions? That's what—he was just saying, that there has been no complaints.
No complaints from any of the abutters.
Not that I'm not that I'm aware of.
Okay. You—go ahead. You put this—the pavement in last year, and my question would be, where do you push the snow to?
We actually—we actually—
We didn't get a lot of snow last year, so.
Yeah, there wasn't much. So there are two areas you can see—I don't know if you can see—and maybe I can highlight it.
Well, I think there's snow storage areas listed.
Yeah, exactly. Right—right here. You really just want to push it down to the ends on the side of the dumpster pad—the dumpster pad in that corner that is open for parking. It just—it's going to be difficult to turn it any other way than to push it down into the site, push the snow down into the site. So those two cloud-like shapes there are where we're proposing the snow—snow storage area.
Now, is that a residential building?
It is. It's seven residential units.
How many?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Okay, and you have, what, 17 parking spots, something like—
There's 23 total.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I did want to mention is, they've installed the dumpster. It's a black vinyl chain link with a vinyl slat—I'm not—black chain link powder-coated or vinyl coated with the slats. Behind it is a nice vinyl beige privacy PVC privacy fence, I think that the—the neighbor wanted when he was redoing it. It's—it's way back in the back. I—I don't see a need to have the applicant—it's screened fairly well, and it's in the back. I don't see a need to have him rip that out and put in a—a solid fence in this particular case.
Do we have any photos right now of what it looks like? Do we have any photos of what it looks like? Is there any—is there any photos of what that area looks like?
The applicant has a photo of the—of the front. I can—I'll go to Google Maps.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Hessian, who is the owner of the property. You need to talk, anything.
Yeah, the photos of the dumpster area, the rear part of the site, where that is?
Well, he's getting the photos. I was actually down there today and took a drive-in. And, yeah, he—he—the gate was slightly open.
Yeah.
Yeah, she wished it was high enough, you know.
Is the fence high enough to—I—I went by there too. It seemed that you could see the top of the dumpster.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so it should have been an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence.
It has gone before Board of Health for variance for the setback.
Yeah.
So they've approved the—the location, but obviously the screening comes before us.
The screening is before us. That'd be my only—you know, I wish they were using different slats, but the—the slats on the—in the thing—I'm not—I'm not fully opposed to this fence. I'm just wish, you know, we use a different type of slot, because you can see right through it. You can see the whole dumpster.
Is there a height requirement? 288, Bill.
If you go on the angle, but they went straight up and down with it.
Is there a height requirement for the fence to block out completely?
We need something real for this. I don't know how—we—I don't know how we're going to put any height on it at this point.
Do you know, Paul?
It is supposed to block the visibility. This is way in the back to—
Right, but it's—it's not blocking it. Yes, the dumpster's higher.
Higher than the fence, right.
Hey, Bill, I think that's an old drawer of mine.
It is.
Yeah, because I have it here.
The Google Map doesn't have it.
Let's send Google out there.
So normally, we would ask for a solid enclosure around the dumpster. It used to be just a white—like a white PVC fence or some sort of so. But the other concern is, we always want the—whatever we're using for an enclosure to be higher than the dumpster. And so it should have been like maybe an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence. My opinion at this point in time would maybe just do a—with a denser slat of—
They have the slats in—in—the fencing now.
Yeah, but it's a vertical. It's not giving—it's not really dense. I mean, you can see the whole dumpster through it.
Oh.
You know, the type of slats or whatever way they're doing it are not—it's not doing any type of screening to the dumpster.
Oh, so they put it in vertical?
They put them in vertical.
At an angle?
No, they put it down vertical rather than—
At an angle?
Diagonally.
Okay.
So I think they can change that. I'm not going to ask about getting a height, but normally, if we had what you come before, we would have asked for an eight-foot fence, you know, or—or eight-foot screening around that entire thing.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hessian just came up to me and mentioned that he'd be happy to get a dumpster that's lower, that's at a lower—
If you can get a dumpster that's lower, that would be even that much better. I know that a lot of dumpsters companies don't have it, but yes.
And put the fence in at an angle.
And I'd be happy with that.
I don't know if Craig has anything to say.
Now, when you say about putting the slats in diagonally, you mean on all sides?
On all sides, yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Yep.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is that the—the dumpster location, you did go—put in application with the Board of Health for the location, because it's less than the required 15 feet. And they did grant that waiver to be less than 15 feet from the property line. So the Board of Health has looked at— this particular location and approved it, so.
Aside from that, it's just the screening issue.
Right, but as far as the dumpster size-wise, how many units— units did you say again?
It's seven units.
All right, is that dumpster going to be large enough to handle that kind of capacity?
Yeah, I—I don't know.
How often does it get—
This is an existing site, and that—that existing dumpster is more than enough for what they need there.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, if you went to a smaller dumpster, that would have to be picked up more often, that's all.
That's something—
I mean, it seems to be so. He's—he's trying to maintain his property. I don't think he's going to let it go over the floor, so I'm not—I'd appreciate if we could get to a lower dumpster and just change the—the slats diagonal and we'll go with that.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, if you have nothing else, our recommendation is to—if you have no other things—to close the public hearing and direct me to—to look at doing a standard set of conditions. And I will add a condition regarding the dumpster slats and—and a smaller—
And we can sign that, yeah.
So—it's a really standard set of conditions, and the only other condition would be to—to put the slats on all four sides and put them at—put them at a diagonal.
And that he will change the height of the dumpster too, with six-foot dumpster.
You know, change the—the size of the dumpster to—to go below the fencing.
The height of the fence.
I—I have one more question. Are you comfortable with the topography of this, that everything's going to drain not into anybody else's property, and it's all going to be contained in that area?
Yes, we are. So the—the stormwater management area has been designed to—to capture the 100-year storm. I reviewed this last week and actually just had the engineer update the calculations to accommodate the 100-year storm. So that's—that's all in there. You know, right now, the site has just a couple of leach and catch basins. Those are still going to remain, but this is all in addition to—to what's out there now. So it's going to be an improvement over the way it's existed for the last year.
Okay. My concern, of course, is that an abutter would come at some point and say, you know, "This didn't meet the guidelines, and I'm getting water in my basement," or something like that. I want to just be sure that we've—
Yeah, no, this absolutely meets the guidelines. They did a test pit out there to determine the soil texture and the groundwater table elevation to make sure that they're designing in accordance with all that. You know, it—and the 100-year design storm is the gold standard of what we try to capture.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Richard Terry, regarding the dumpster enclosure, I think we're setting a bad precedent for allowing someone to—
Go ahead.
Putting it up incorrectly, not realizing this is the code, and then doing a half job. I think we should enforce the code as it is written. We've had a similar situation on Turnpike Street where someone cleared four acres of land, and, "Oh, I didn't know I needed a permit," or—and so I think we're seeing this more frequently, and I think we should enforce the code as is.
So we've always had an architectural standard for the code for—the for the dumpsters. There's been a—since I've been on the board, we've always had the standard that we were using white PVC fence, and we're trying to keep that as a consistent. That's been an—been an issue, because a lot of the dumpsters—the gates have been broken, the—the plastic has been broken. Bill has come up with an idea that, okay, we'll still use a consistent type of thing, but we're going to start using the material of the building, so that it ties in with if it's a brick building or it's a sided building with a block, and we're going to use that as the—as the dumpster enclosure. And then put on, you know, a—some type of gate that's going to be acceptable, and that we've been using either a block gate or a white PVC gate, or something that is solid enough that you can't see the dumpsters. And then the height of these—the structure is higher than—the dumpster. So there is no—I—there's nothing written saying the dumpster has to be this. It's a matter of, you know, how we've been trying to progress with the board to make it—to make it something consistent throughout the town.
Consistent but adaptable.
Right, but the—the issue with the white PVC fence became more of a damaging issue as we were going forward. We found that in the past history. So now, going forward, we're trying to make it so it's working more. So there's nothing that says that they have to have this. The only thing we do—we do insist upon is the height of the fence, which we—they are going to accommodate us by dropping that down. And then the only other thing is the solid fence. So the only other way that we would do that, if—if the board wants—I'm—I'm only just one—it would be that we would bring it back to some other material that's of the building surrounding it, and to build up a wall or a fence that matches exactly what's around the building. That's the—that's the way that we've been trying to direct this. So if that's what the board wishes, and we would like to go that way and have them redo that, then that's a—there's something we can do. Okay? So, yes, I—I'm, you know, open. That's why we're here as a board to discuss it. And that's, you know, you're bringing up a point, and we're here, so that's the point.
How about if they're going to go through the work on changing the slats? Could they take something—because now you have a chain link fence. You know, it's a solid fence and everything else. Whatever you take and attach it to that existing chain link fence.
That's just—that's a construction issue.
That doesn't work well.
It—it doesn't really work. It—it'll just fall off.
Okay.
So—and—and the board has the ability, you know, it—it says, you know, they say, you know, "They—they prefer no chain link and—and cedar fencing." It's listed in the code. However, the board can choose—it—it does allow the board to choose if they wish to look at cedar chain link or—or—and as you—you—you know, I'm very adamant against white vinyl enclosures, because you look over—look around our community, and we have nothing but broken white vinyl. You know that all the new projects, especially the commercial ones, they're the cinder block with the ephes or the—the stucco that matches the building and those sorts of things. And that's where we're going.
The chain link is—the only—the issue, and I've—we've had this discussion with the chain link, is—it's just what's happening with this particular site, is it—all you can see is the dumpster, because you're looking right through the chain link at the dumpster.
Right. I think that between the distance, the—the black vinyl coated chain link, doing the slats sideways, you know, the property's well maintained. I—you know, I—I don't see an issue with it in this particular instance.
I—I do take your point seriously, Rich. I think it's—it's a good point. And, you know, the whole thing with the chain link fence is something that—that's probably the reason—first I saw the picture, and that's why I asked for it, is the first thing you see is the dumpster. And I—that's part of the reason we don't like the idea of the chain link fences. We have let them go in—in the past, but it is a—it is an issue for us.
And I appreciate the comments from both you and the Tom Planner. Thank you.
Well, that being said, yes, we can close the hearing. We'll just have to discuss what we want to do on that point as a board. So I guess the first thing is, can we take a motion to close the hearing?
So made.
Excuse me?
Is there anybody online? I can't—
No, there's nobody online that I can see.
Okay. Nobody in the audience. Right.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so taking the discussion at this point in time is whether we'll take the—the order of conditions, the way you've got them written. It's a matter of—the only item right now is that I see is on the table is how we're going to finalize the dumpster.
I just said—you—you can just direct me. I will look at writing the standard order of conditions with the special condition regarding the dumpster that—to—that you have. I will then email that out with the agenda. I know we are not holding public hearing items, any non-zoning, but—
We can—we can sign, but we can sign documents.
I would put this on the January 9 hearing for the first item on the agenda. You'll get the conditions in—in advance to look at approving them. It's more of a ministerial thing.
Richard, the only other—the only other item I would just want before he writes the conditions is, the board as a whole, is the board okay with that—with leaving this dumpster enclosure the way that it is? With adding the slats diagonal and lowering the dumpster? Or do we want to direct them to do something else?
My preference would be to have the cinder block enclosure with the gate.
With what type of gate?
Chain link gate.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you guys closed the hearing.
Excuse me?
You closed the hearing.
We closed it for discussion, though. I didn't close it for—I closed it to the public for this, but that doesn't mean the board can't discuss it. That's—that's what I was at. I did close it, but only for the board to discuss. So the—
I think that, you know, we ought to move to a standard like—
I mean, the thing is, is we're—if we're going to go to—it's—we're still back to the same thing, because the—which you're going to see from the street is going to be the chain link fence in the direction that this—this dumpster is.
Okay.
So you're not going to—I'm just trying to say, you're not going to change anything as far as the chain link goes. We'd have to figure out a different type of—whether we go to a cedar type of fence or something else in order to change the look of what we're doing.
Right.
It doesn't—it doesn't do us any good to—in my opinion, just to say, "Okay, what's going to be the cinder block wall?" But you're still looking at a chain link fence from the street.
Right, so that then maybe we'd go with a cedar gate.
Okay, so we've got two proposals on the ground—on the floor right now. Anything else?
Because you're really only looking at the—the gate. Everything else you really can't see, so.
So, I mean, right now, we just take a motion to either accept it the way that it—the way that we've discussed with the chain link fence and the—the slats, or we take the alternative of what Paul was—what Paul was—we asked for. Do I have a motion either way?
Motion to vote on the—the choice of leave it as existing or build a cedar—
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, but I need a motion.
But I have—it's—that's two different motions.
I get—I have a motion, one or the other.
A motion to cinder block enclosure with a cedar gate.
Do I have a—do I have a second for that? Okay. So that one fails. It can't go any further, so I need the other—I need a motion for the other—the other design.
You—you can put a cedar gate on the front of the chain link and have the slats on the side, if you so choose.
Motion—motion to leave the surround as is and put a cedar gate on the front of the enclosure.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to two. We got it. We'll do it in that fashion then, Bill. Put it up for that. We'll have to look at the design of the cedar fencing, whatever we're going to look at, but we can come up with—
I'll talk to the engineer about that.
I will say, on a side note, Pandora—no, Pandora, um, yeah. Place down on the Brockton Line there. Near it. I've been watching their fence there, and they did a very good job, and it looks very well. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Well, yeah, we don't have like a set—
We just basically—but you are right. We don't have—we don't have a chain link fence is not allowed, and that, you know, we get into all these different things, but we're going to—we're going to box ourselves out of everything.
Yeah, I think the—the—the block enclosure is probably the best, you know.
It is, but it's—it actually protects everything, but it's just a matter of how —with—the way we're looking at this, you're not going to see any—you're not going to see anything, because you can't see it from any of the other sides.
But again, like Richard was saying about, let's get to a standard, and we'll just say, block enclosure, gate.
But every site can be slightly different. If we try to lock into one, I think we're looking for trouble too, you know?
I agree with that—that concept.
Yeah.
But like Rich was saying, people are getting—
You—we have minutes, Mr. Chairman.
I had it, yeah. I just haven't gotten the words out of my mouth.
You can tell who wants to go home.
Okay, Planning Board meeting minutes. We have two on stack here. We've got one for October 17th, one for November 14th. I'm going to start with—well, I'm sorry, we have three. We have one for October 10th also. All right, three.
Minutes are turning into hours.
So on the minutes for October 10th, does anybody have any comments for those—for those minutes at this point in time?
I want a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
I'm going to give the date.
October—
October 10th.
10th?
Yep, 2024.
Do a second for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes for October 17th, 2024.
Motion to accept, October 17th, Draft 2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes for November 14th, 2024.
Motion to accept, Thursday, November 14th, Draft 2. Minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have one other item on the general business. We want to talk about Planning Board meeting schedule?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chairman. I have reserved in the calendar downstairs the various rooms. You have the schedule for 2025. Obviously, we know that things get moved and—and changed, but in order to make sure I maintain this room most of the time, I had to book the entire thing. So it's the second and fourth Thursdays. There are, between now and through March, we are in like the Fitzpatrick Room on the, on the 27th of February and then on March. And March 13th, we have to either go to the police station or the library. That's due to the Finance Committee, and the ninth is also Finance Committee. So, our next hearing is advertised for January 9th. They've already been advertised. We have seven zoning map amendments and bylaw amendments. I'll let you know, there's three map amendments, three cleanups. We have accessory dwelling unit bylaw. We have the short-term rental bylaw. I have a bylaw amendment change to the I-2 district, which is a little, yeah, we're getting, we're getting the approval from the Attorney General, and they're striking a section in the use table. Actually, there's two permitted uses as of right under state law, and we actually have them not permitted in our code in the industrial district. And I carried that over in the I-2 district. So, we are going to be correcting that in the industrial...
What are the two items?
I don't know. One is agriculture, the two agriculture permitted uses. And then the other one is some sort of, it's permitted and regulated through DEP, is solid waste facility, which is allowed under state law, and we actually prohibit it. So, we're in, not in compliance with state law. It's, it's three sections of the use table. And it was only discovered because she was reviewing the, the state attorney general was reviewing the, the I-2 district. And then she's already talked to the town attorney about it. It's a simple fix. It's just, I carried the no's over from the industrial district. So, we shouldn't have had a no there anyway. So, that's those. And then the last one is we are modifying the aquifer protection zone district. We are eliminating the wetlands out of zoning, because it's duplicative, because they have a separate wetlands bylaw and they have state law. And we are removing the floodplain overlay district in its entirety and then replacing it with an entirely new, the model bylaw that's required by FEMA and the state.
Is that due to the FEMA upgrades?
Hmm?
Is that due to the FEMA upgrades last, last year?
Correct, and everything, everything on that bylaw is, I've sent it to the state already. I've gotten their comments back. The only thing that, when you get everything, you'll see in the code, it lists the map and the map numbers and the effective dates. Those are highlighted with a note saying that those will change. We anticipate getting the approved map and numbers in January. So, I'm hoping we have it before the January 23rd meeting. If not, then you vote it, you know, as, you know, we vote the map numbers. The map numbers aren't changing. It's just the effective date. And you just vote effective date per FEMA. And then prior to the warrant being published, I will put the FEMA effective date. So, it's a lot of, lot of zoning amendments. There's seven of them.
Now, are those proposed to be done in the May town meeting?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm hoping that you can move the question, Mr. Murphy. Not question the question, but move the question. But we will, I'm getting the notices out now. I have to send notices, and I'm, I have to notice everything by Tuesday of next week. So, it's busy today, tomorrow, and Monday. We're getting all the notices to the state, to the butters, and all of that. So, that, and then I'll have the packet ready, and then we'll get that to you.
The, was, did you say industrial waste?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't have my code with me. I, I, I can, I can email that to you tonight. It's not industrial. It's, it's some, it's, it's a section in our code. It's a...
Industrial zone, and they said that we have to have, we have to allow solid waste.
Solid waste.
Okay.
Solid waste facility is allowed as of right per DEP in industrial districts. So, and we don't, so we have to correct that. And the only reason they found, they noticed it is because we have a new industrial district, and the Attorney General said, oh, this is a permitted use, state use, so you need to... So, they're striking that and telling me I need to go change it.
Okay, I didn't quite understand. I didn't know if you had a locationary in mind or not.
No, it's a use.
Use, I'm sorry.
Use.
So, Campinelli area would be, it has I-2 in it, so that would be allowable in that area.
The what?
The Campinelli.
I-2. It would be allowed in the, it's allowed in any industrial, so. It's just... And it would be now, because even if we prohibit it, even if we prohibit it, state law was superseded. So, we're just making it compliant, that's all.
Wow, sorry. It would be an allowed use, but DEP would need to permit that use on the property. So, even though it's allowed by zoning by right, it still needs to go through a permitting process for that to happen.
And if there's wetlands near it, wouldn't it go through, things like that? There's a whole, a whole lot of hoops.
They would strike, something happening there, so.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to update you that there are technically...
I'll be putting stop sticks on Turnpike Street if that stops.
I just wanted to update you that there are seven zoning and map amendments. It's within five articles, because the map amendment is one article, and it's three zoning map amendments within one. So, like we did, zoning A, B, and C. So, I'll be getting that together, and you will be getting it. I'll probably get it done. I'll probably set the agenda, and since there's nothing else going on, we're really not around a lot at Christmas, so I'm, I'm here the day, the Friday after Christmas. I'm hoping to get everything packaged together by that, right at the end of December, getting it to you at least a week, week and a half in advance. Okay.
Does anybody else have any other general business?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Happy holidays.